Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day, with Lodi and Morse Parade in Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Council Court. Uh, today is Class 112, Class 112. Uh, what did we learn in Class 111? Well, we're still reading over a United Nations Resolution of the year 1973, right? And that resolution, for the most part, is about the Convention on Prevention and the Crime, right, against internationally protected persons. Where it is, just to give you a summary on it, as we're still reading it, that is, is about what? How do states protect their diplomats abroad? How do states protect their protected persons abroad, right? So international law was set forth from the United Nations on how to protect all of your diplomats who have privileges and immunities, right? And international law also protects the protected persons of your state. Now, protected persons can be who? Well, most of the diplomats, based upon their family members, their family members come under the same privileges and immunities as the diplomat itself, right? But then you also have what's called protected persons, and protected persons have what you call special protections, right? Special protections. Where it is, if the state recognizes that protected person as having special protections, that means no foreign state can do anything to detain, arrest, or adjudicate that protected person, right? So international, uh, resolutions have done a good job to set up the reforms, i.e. the rules of engagement on how states start to engage with other states on planet Earth, alright? But let's make that more applicable to the Moors. Well, right here in Morocco, the Empire of Morocco, the Moors are now cohabitating with Americans, right? The Americans have what you call a privileged, a privileged status in Morocco because the treaties recognize their right to stay. They can literally hold property in the Empire of Morocco, right? So we're, we're sharing jurisdictions, okay? But our Moroccan laws reign supreme over the Americans' jurisdiction. But we still have to learn how to cohabit it, because that's what the treaties say. The treaty is about peace and friendship, right? The Madrid Convention of 1880 also talks about protection in Morocco, but it gives the Americans the right to hold property in Morocco, right? And the Act of Aldacerris of 1906 also clarifies that, under Article 60 of the Act of Aldacerris also clarified the fact that the Americans get to hold deeds, right, as holders and do course of deeds in the Empire of Morocco. So therefore, the Moors, more specifically, the Moroccans and the Americans are cohabitating based in two separate jurisdictions, okay? We have to learn how to live together, alright? But the reality is, our Moroccan states will have what you call diplomats and officers that work for the states, and those diplomats and officers and staff members will have what's called privileges and immunities. They can't be arrested, detained, or adjudicated whatsoever. They are immune, okay? We'll have protected persons on a protected person list, right? They'll have special protections, right? They will be immune as well from any other type of jurisdiction doing anything to them, right? Because they're on a protected person list, okay? So this is what Moors have to understand. The United States of America, the United States and its several charter states, meaning their governors, their mayors, their magistrates, their prosecutors, they're already going to know there's nothing they can do to supervene the possibility of Moroccan law. And they'll know they can't do anything to supervene the possibility of us protecting our own diplomats and protected persons. However, does that mean the United States won't make mistakes? No. Does that mean the United States and its governors won't do something malicious and still lock up one of our diplomats or protected persons? Yeah, it might happen. How do I know? Because the United Nations would not have drafted resolutions to protect diplomats if, in fact, diplomats and protected persons wasn't being locked up abroad. So this has nothing to do with Moors. This is about understanding the rules of engagement. It just so happens that Moors, i.e. Moroccans, are dealing with Americans. So if American officials try to do something to supervene the possibility of our rights, now you can utilize international law, right, as a means of remedy, right? So what's the remedy sought? What's the nature of relief sought? Well, the nature of relief sought is to make sure our diplomat gets released immediately. The nature of relief sought is to make sure our protected person gets released immediately. That way, we can try to avoid any so-called misunderstandings. However, if they continue to detain one of our diplomats or protected persons long-term, right? Now they're starting to get into a status of alleged criminal acts, right? Now they're starting to get in the status of what Chapter 7 of the United Nations talked about, right? And what does Chapter 7 of the United Nations Charter talk about? Okay, let's go to the board. Okay, so the Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 7, Articles 39 through 51, talks about what? Actions with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression. So take for instance, if the United States of America or one of their governors, uh, one of their prosecutors, uh, their magistrates, police sheriffs, anything like that, tries to detain, arrest, or adjudicate one of our diplomats or protected persons, that means now the United States of America and its several charter states, right, are doing what? They're threatening the peace. The peace of what? The peace between state on state. All states are supposed to maintain peace and security on planet Earth. So now they're threatening the rights of our state as well as threatening the rights of our protected diplomats and protected persons, right, under Chapter 7. What else? Then there's breaches of the peace, right? Now they're breaching what? They're breaching our Moroccan laws. They're breaching international law, right? And what else? Then there can be acts of aggression. Now they're being aggressive. So therefore, the reason why Moors should study international law, so we can understand what is the universal law? What's the neutrality law that already Moors can invoke immediately as our means of defense, right? Therefore, if these are acts, right? These are acts of threats, you got acts that are breaches, and you got acts that are simply just aggression. Okay, how do you combat this? Okay, the United Nations put together what? Acts such as the United Nations Resolutions. Those are resolutions, i.e. laws, international law, in order to be a reaction to any threats, breaches, or aggression against another state and its protected persons, you see? So a very act requires an action, right? Now, do you see the key word right here? Look, Moors. Action, right? Action, action with respect to threats. So international law has put together resolutions that send action to threats. The United Nations Resolutions have put together actions to deal with breaches, right? The United Nations Resolutions are acts that deal with breaches. The United Nations Resolutions are acts that deal with aggression, right? It's called cause and effect, right? Action, reaction. How do you set forth a remedy to solve a problem? And this, so the United Nations done an excellent job putting together these councils and these committees to come up with international law. That way, it's universal language, right? It's universal statutes that all states play by the same rules of law, right? Neutrality law, that's all international law is, is neutrality law between states. That's what we have to take away from this so far, okay? Uh, what else did we, uh, learn in Class 111? Well, we started looking at what's commonly known as the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People of 2007. We also briefly started reading over the, uh, International Court of Justice case concerning France versus United States of America, which was about the rights of the United States of America's nationals in Morocco, right? So we briefly read over what the ICJ said about the fact of how a council court, as well as Moroccan laws, can be applicable against the United States nationals, right? And what we learned is the ICJ already informed the United States of America in the year 1952 that the United States of America shall be, be applicable to Moroccan law. The United States of America and its nationals have to come under Moroccan law, right? Moroccan law is supreme in Morocco. Well, doesn't that just simply make sense? If the land is Morocco and the people of the land are Moroccans, that means the Moroccans need to enforce Moroccan laws. You must always remember that the United States of America, right, and its several charter states are foreigners in Morocco. So they're charter states, they are foreign entities. The United States International Organization is a foreign entity. And the United States of America's Constitution of 1789 is a foreign constitution that was given asylum in the Empire of Morocco. And Moroccan laws are set forth to protect the rights of Americans. It was our job to put them in a protected status, right? The 13 colonies turned into 50 colonies, right? And to this very day, they still come under the protection of Moroccan law. That must be understood. That means it was the obligation of Moors to enforce Moroccan law to maintain law and order in Morocco. That must be understood, right? So, so ultimately, what, what should we take away from, from Class 111? Well, remember the last, like, Articles 9 through 13 that we were reading started talking about judicial proceedings, right? So in that United Nations Resolution of 1973, it says, okay, if there's a threat, if there's a breach, if there's aggression, then you have to utilize arbitration, and if arbitration fails, then judicial settlement must prevail. So therefore, we have to bring our council courts in to settle the dispute, right? So what does that mean if our council courts get to settle dispute? Well, that means the United States legislation, their statutes of the federal government, and their statutes of the several charter states are all moot. They're all subordinate to Moroccan law. You see, Moors, you have to understand something. The United States has always known that they are subject to Moroccan law, which means they're bound to it. So therefore, they have to put the Moors in all these non-degenerate misnomer statuses such as Negro, Black, Color, Indian, et cetera, African-American, Moors-American. None of those names could invoke Moroccan law, because the people were not claiming to be Moroccans. And if the people are not claiming to be Moroccans, that means they could not establish Moroccan states. And if they couldn't establish Moroccan states, that means they could not establish Moroccan laws, because only Moroccan laws are subject to Americans. And they've always known this. They already know their Moroccan leg- um, excuse me, they already know that the United States of America's legislation is subordinate to Moroccan law. From a federal level and a state level, it's subordinate. Even their courts cannot have any federal review. Their magistrates of the several union states, their judges cannot have any judicial review or determination or finding to do anything that would try to undermine or dismiss Moroccan law. So therefore, the federal government and their several mayors, governors, magistrates, and prosecutors, they already know that anything they say or do is already moot if it involves them trying to utilize anything that would try to undermine Moroccan law. This is what the ICJ was telling the United States in 1952. On Pages 201 to 203 tells the whole story. You see, there's no such thing as Illuminati anymore. The Illuminati secret came out in 1952. Just go read Pages 201 to 203, and the whole secret came out. And what was the secret? That first of all, the United States of America is in Morocco. That's the title of the case. And second of all, that Americans are subjected to Moroccan law. Which means, who can enforce Moroccan law? Only Moroccans. Well, who the heck are these Moroccans that that case was talking about? It was talking about the Moors' subjects and the proteges, who are commonly known as Black people. Black people are the Moors' subjects. Black people are the proteges that the International Court of Justice was talking about in 1952. Well, why was the International Court of Justice in 1952 talking about Moors' subjects and proteges? It's because they were invoking the provisions of the treaty. They were reading the treaty provisions out loud. And the treaty provisions talk about these two classifications of Moors' subjects and Moors' proteges. And those Moors' subjects and Moors' proteges had to return back to Morocco and pledge their allegiance to a Moroccan state and start to invoke Moroccan laws through their council courts. That was the whole game right there. So the United States of America and all its several charter states, what did they have to do in order to block the Moors from finding out this information? Well, they had to institute overseers over us. And who are the overseers? Well, those are people who keep telling us that we're Negro, Blacks, and Colors, and we're not. It was those people that tell us that we're Indians, and we're not. It was those people that tell us we're African-Americans, and we're not. And those people that tell us that we're Moors-Americans, and we're not Moors-Americans. So the overseers have been keeping us off the path towards Moroccan law. And the United States has been benefiting from that, and so have the overseers. So that's what we must take away from Class 111. Uh, hopefully, in Class 111, a lot of people learn a lot about the fact that good brother of mine, uh, good brother Jamal Bay, et cetera, that these brothers have to come back home. We love them very much. We want them to bring that energy, right? That good fight inside of them, right? Because they're at an age where they still got a lot of years ahead of them, where they can put in a lot of good work on behalf of a Moroccan state. But right now, they're stateless. And since they're stateless as Moors, that means they still come under the protections of the United States of America as adopted Moors' subjects. And since they're still adopted Moors' subjects, that means they still come under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States federal government statutes. And they still come under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the several 50 charter states and their statutes. And that's the truth, alright? Let's get to the class. Okay, as the Moors know, always open up the Constitution, the Constitution is paramount to get you access to international law. That way, you can start enforcing the neutrality of laws against any state on planet Earth. In addition to international law, now you can start to adopt that language and turn it into your internal law, right? So you take international law, you now bring it back to your state, you download that document, right? And you become a party to international law. You see, so you have to, through your constitutional procedures, through that House of Representatives, right? So all your legislative branch, the legislative branch of Moroccan state has to sign off on a bill that says, "We recognize, we accept," right? "The language of the international law reform, such as 1973 Convention on Prevention and the Crime Against Internationally Protected Persons," right? So within your state, you bring that, that reform back, and the legislative branch ratifies and agrees to it. They consent to it, they pass it over to the head of state, the head of state then signs it into law. Now we become a party to said United Nations Resolution, and then we deposit that with the United Nations to let them know, yes, we become a party to it. After that, we turn around and give notification to the United States and the government and say, "Guess what? We're a party to this United Nations Resolution, and we can enforce it against you." Alright? That must be understood. Okay, let's get to the class. Alright, there's ANPAC contact information? Okay, so as the Moors know, right now, we're still going over the, uh, the Charter of the United Nations. We're still in Chapter 7, we've already read Articles 39 through 51, but now we're going into some deeper, uh, United Nations Resolutions regarding these particular words, right? So we're talking about what? Threats, breaches, and aggression to international peace, okay? And then the United Nations turn around and through their website, they, through their website, United Nations website, they say, "Okay, we, we have put certain resolutions under what's commonly known as terrorism." Right? Some of their resolutions are listed under terrorist acts. So they, they call it now what? Office of Counterterrorism. They're countering terrorism, right? So, so as a recap, let, let's read, um, let's read this title, and then we'll come on down to one of the resolutions that we've been reading of 1973.
International Legal Instruments. Since 1963, the international community has elaborated 19 international legal instruments to prevent terrorist acts. Those instruments were developed under the auspices of the United Nations and the International Atomic Energy Agency, the IAEA, and are open to participation by all member states. Here is a summary of the 19 universal legal instruments and additional amendments dealing with terrorism.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, so as the Moors can see, under this particular, uh, page on the United Nations website, it's about counterterrorism, right? And it's listed 19, what they consider 19 international legal instruments, and they bundle under terrorism, right? How do you counter it, right? So they literally use the word terrorist acts. Terrorist acts and terrorism, right? Okay, that's the, that's the proper context of what we're reading. Now you scroll down, you say, "Okay, well, what documents are they talking about?" Okay, for example, you come down to this particular resolution we've been reading in the last couple of classes, and it, and it says right here.
Instrument Regarding the Protection of International Staff. 1973 Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons. Defines an international protected person as a head of state, minister of foreign affairs, representative or official of a state or international organization who is entitled to special protection in a foreign state and his or her family, and requires parties to criminalize and make punishable by appropriate penalties which take into account their grave nature. The international murder, kidnapping, or other attack upon the person or liberty of an internationally protected person, a violent attack upon the official premises, the private accommodations, or the means of transport of such person. A threat or attempt to commit such an attack and enact constituting participation as an accomplice.
Alright, so this is what we're learning, right? And the United Nations is basically saying, hey, we have listed this particular reform, right? This convention of 1973 is about how do we prevent protected diplomats, right, staff and protected persons from their rights being infringed against abroad, right? And they list this under terrorism. So what should the Moors take away from this immediately? Well, if the United States is doing something to, uh, regarding a threat or breach or an act of aggression against our diplomats and protected person, that's basically an act of what? Terrorism, you see? And international law has already been set forth. So what should the Moors do next? Well, we, we need to become a party to these resolutions, so we can enforce a terrorist resolution against the United States of America and their governors and all their municipalities, right? As well as what? We need Moroccan laws of our own to start really breaking down the details of what that means to us. What is a threat? What is a breach? What is aggression, right? How do our council courts start to enact the Moroccan laws against the United States, right? What is the sentencing guidelines? Imagine that. Imagine that Moors are going to have sentencing guidelines that we can enforce against the Americans. So when I say Americans, what do I specifically mean? I'm talking about the accomplices, the heads of the international organization coming those United States. We can have sentencing guidelines against the governors, the mayors, the prosecutors, their magistrates, anyone who's a what? An accomplice. Anyone who's an accomplice, anyone participating, right? Constituting participation as an accomplice. An accomplice is just an accomplice. It does not state who the accomplice is. Accomplice, anyone who's affiliated in acts of threats, breaches, and aggression, period. It don't matter what their titles are. Let me just say this for the record. The United States is an international organization, and all of its departments do not and shall not enjoy any privileges and immunities away from our council courts. Our Moroccan laws are applicable against anyone referring themselves to American citizen, no matter what title they hold. Because they're in Morocco, our laws reign supreme. So where that's, their president, their attorney general, right, their secretary of state, the governor, the mayors, the police, the sheriff, the prosecutor, the magistrate, the clerks, et cetera, none of them have privileges and immunities away from our Moroccan laws. None of them are immune from our council courts. And they know this already. I'm not saying nothing out loud, they don't already know, okay? So you must understand what's happening right now. This is why they never wanted to tell Moors that they were Moors, because the, the United States and their officials did not want to be, be arraigned. They did not want to be indicted for breaching what? Moroccan laws. Well, timeout. Has the United States been breaching Moroccan laws?
Oh, yes.
Uh-huh, yes, and no. What do I mean? Tell me one of the first Moroccan law that ever came out. Well, you would first start with the treaties. But it was the obligation of who did enforce the treaties? Moroccans. So if Moroccans did not hold the United States bound to Moroccan law, now you gotta blame that on the Sultan. You gotta blame that on France, and France was overseeing the empire from 1912 up until So you gotta blame all the Sultans from 1787 up until 1912, because they did not hold the United States bound to Moroccan law. Then you have to blame France, who overseen the entire empire through the Treaty of Fehds of 1912. From 1912 to 1956, France didn't hold the United States bound to Moroccan law. And then soon as Mohammed V got his Declaration of Independence, and he became king of the king of Morocco, the little small state, he vacated the seat of Sultan, he left the entire empire void of the central government. The whole entire government empire now was on automatic. It was, it was no pilot. So after 1956, have the United States of America, the United States and their governors been breaching specific Moroccan laws? Well, guess and no. What do I mean? You see, the treaties are always enforced. So if they're breaching Moroccan law, who was holding them accountable to it? Nobody. So therefore, they were what you call alleged criminals. They were allegedly breaching the Moroccan treaties, but nobody's holding them accountable. Now, let's fast forward to the year 2021, more specifically, February 28, 2021. What happened on that day? Well, first of all, ANPAC, as a government, Lodi and Morse Parade in Antay, Colorado, signed the Constitution, February 28, 2021, putting it into Black History Month. And also a new beginning to start working towards restoring the Empire of Morocco's judicial power and legislative power. So after the date of February 28, 2021, has the United States of America and the governors, mayors, magistrates, prosecutors been breaching Moroccan law? The answer would be yes, if in fact, let's say ANPAC's example has been giving specific notification to the governors and the United States about our Moroccan law and our, our territory, and how we're enforcing not only our constitution, but we're also enforcing Moroccan treaties and we're enforcing Moroccan law, we're enforcing orders through the council court. Now we're enforcing Moroccan law against the United States. Now they are definitely alleged criminals, because now we're moving forward utilizing mediation, arbitration, then judicial settlement against them. So you have to understand, Moors, the reason why the United States has been so belligerent on planet Earth, because the Sultan's really wasn't holding them accountable. The reason why the United States has been running around so belligerent on planet Earth is because France didn't hold them accountable. The reason why the United States has been running around belligerent on planet Earth is because Mohammed V, from the year 1956 to 1962, did not hold the United States accountable. But guess who's holding them accountable now? The true heirs to the mayor, which are the true indigenous Moroccans, i.e. the Moors. It's our turn, and we'll do it right this time. Why do I say that? Because we're going to enforce the strict sense of our treaties, we're going to enforce the strict sense of our Moroccan law, and we're going to enforce the strict sense of international law against the United States, its staff, and all of its charter states, governors, mayors, prosecutors, police, sheriffs, clerks, you name it. We will all hold them as accomplices if in fact they're trying to breach our Moroccan law. The game's over now, and they know it. And I'm not telling y'all anything they don't already know. That's what y'all gotta understand. They knew about this before we could even spell the word international. They knew about this before Noah Dry They knew about this before Noah Drali even came on the scene. You gotta understand what I'm saying. Noah Drali didn't come out to nineteen thirteen. Where the Treaty of Peace and Friendship came out in seventeen eighty-seven. It was renewed fifty years later, eighteen thirty-six. Then in eighteen eighty, the Treaty of Madrid was signed, eighteen eighty. Noah Drali wasn't even born until eighteen eighty-six. So three treaties that came out before Noah was born. By the time in nineteen thirteen, Noah Drali came out and started to tell us we were Moors. Guess what happened between the year eighteen eighty and nineteen twelve? Well, technically, three treaties. You got the Treaty of eighteen eighty, Treaty of Madrid. Then you got the Act of Outsters of nineteen oh six, and you got the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve. So by the time Noah even came out, said publicly, said, man, we're Moroccans, we need to be enforcing Moroccan law. You already had several treaties that was already in full force and effect. And the United States already knew the obligations to those treaties. They've always known. With or without Noah telling us about it, they've always known their obligations to these treaties. That must be understood. Let's get into the class. Alright, so we were reading over this resolution. Alright, let's go ahead and click on it. Well, first the name of the resolution as a recap was nineteen seventy-three convention on the prevention and punishment of crimes against internationally protected persons. Let's go ahead and click on it. Alright. Okay, let's go ahead and read the title. We're going down to Article thirteen uh as a recap, and then we get into Article fourteen, alright? I'm listening.
Multilateral Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons, Including Diplomatic Agents, with Resolution Thirty-One Sixty-Six of the General Assembly of the United Nations, adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations at New York on the fourteenth of December nineteen seventy-three.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and uh jump on down to uh Article thirteen as a recap. Okay? Alright, Article thirteen, we'll, we'll pick up from where we left off in um Class One Eleven. I'm listening.
Article thirteen, one, any dispute between two or more states' parties concerning the interpretation or application of this convention, which is not settled by negotiation, shall, at the request of one of them, be submitted to arbitration. If within six months from the date of the request for arbitration, the parties are unable to agree on the organization of the arbitration, any one of those parties may refer to dispute to the International Court of Justice by request in conformity with the statute of the court. Two, each state party may, at the time of signature or ratification of this convention or accession thereto, declare that it does not consider itself bound by paragraph one of this article. The other state's party shall not be bound by paragraph one of this article with respect to any state party which has made such a reservation. Three, any state party which has made a reservation in accordance with paragraph two of this article may at any time withdraw that reservation by notification to the Secretary General of the United Nations. Article fourteen, this convention shall be open for signatures by all states until the thirty-first of December of nineteen seventy-four at United Nations Headquarters in New York. Article fifteen, this convention is subject to ratification. The instruments of ratification shall be deposited with the Secretary General of the United Nations. Article sixteen, this convention shall remain open for accession by any state. The instruments of accession shall be deposited with the Secretary General of the United Nations.
Awesome, okay. Now we're getting to what? Specific instructions.
Yep.
Right? The United Nations has set forth rules of engagement for all states, if in fact they want to become a party to a United Nations resolution, then they have to follow certain steps, guidelines, specific instructions, right? That's set forth specific performance, okay? So here are instructions. It says right here, uh Article fourteen, this convention shall be up, open for signature by all states until thirty-one December nineteen seventy-four at United Nations Headquarters in New York, right? So that means you have an opportunity to put your signature on it, become a part of it, okay? Number fifteen, this convention is subject to ratification. Well, what does ratification mean? That's called your constitutional procedures. Ratification means you have to bring this particular contract, right? This United Nations Resolution of nineteen seventy-three, you have to bring it back to your state, right? You have to download it from the United Nations website. Then you have to give it over to the House of Representatives, which is the House of the Low ID's, right, in Morocco City. And the head of state, the Seir Raja, then takes a look at it and then passes it over to the House members so they can vote on it and say, yeah, we want to accept the terms and conditions of this United Nations Resolution. Then the House of Representatives, the matriarchs of the legislative branch, then they ratified, they signed and agreed to the terms and conditions of this. Then they passed it to the executive branch, to the head of state, the Wazir. And the Wazir then accepts it and signs it into law. It's called ratification, going through a two-step process. Then from there, the head of state or the Mr. Porter Ferris has to do what? Then they turn around and deposit it with the United Nations in accordance with Article one oh two. And that's what this is talking about, steps. Okay, let's read the steps again. Okay, Article fourteen, this convention shall be open for signature by all states until thirty-one December nineteen seventy-four at United Nations Headquarters in New York. Article fifteen, the convention is subject to ratification. That's constitutional procedure, right, two-step process. Then the instrument of ratification shall be deposited with the Secretary General of the United Nations. You gotta deposit it with them. Right? Th- this is what Moors were in the absence of. We didn't understand the instructions on how to become parties to any treaty. This is the treaty we're reading. The word treaty is a generic word. A treaty is any instrument that's signed between two or more states. If there's only two states, it's a bilateral treaty. What we're reading right here is what? A multilateral treaty. So this is a treaty. So this is how we have to treat all treaties, including the Treaties of Peace and Friendship. Moors were never parties to the Treaties of Peace and Friendship because we hadn't followed the basic instructions. We kept talking about the treaties, trying to enforce the treaties, and we were derelict in our duties because we didn't understand instructions of international law because our Moors American teachers never taught us about international law reforms and instructions. Let's read the instructions again. If Moors want to become parties to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six and eighteen eighty and nineteen oh six, what do we have to do? Okay, Article fourteen, this convention, right, so let's say the convention, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. So we're saying, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship shall be open for signatures by all states, right? The uh uh thirty-first December nineteen seventy-four at United Nations Headquarters in New York, okay? That's if you want to sign it, but check it out. Article fifteen, this is where the pure instructions come in for Moors in what's called present day. In the twenty-first century, we become contracting parties to the treaty. You see, this first number fourteen is about those people that was there during the time that were drafting it.
Negotiating parties.
Negotiating states, negotiating party. Anybody after the date of nineteen seventy-four now becomes a contracting party because now after the fact, you're going back to sign on to it, whatever date that may be. Such as Moors right now, such as AMPAK, we became parties to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship in the year twenty twenty-one. Came a contracting state to it in twenty twenty-one. Because AMPAK did not exist in the year seventeen eighty-six or seventeen eighty-seven. So in seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven, negotiating states signed it. After the fact, anybody else trying to become a party to it now has become a contracting state or contracting party to set treaty. Okay, let's read the instructions of Article fifteen again. Article fifteen, the convention, right, let's say the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is subject to ratification. Okay, how do you do ratification, Moors? You must have a state that has two branches of government, that has a legislator, right? And has executive branch. Without the government, you can't ratify a treaty. You can't put your name on it. You can't become parties to it without the state. And there's no state without the constitution. The constitution itself had to be deposited with the United Nations in accordance with Article one oh two of the Charter. Let's start all over. Article fifteen, okay? Let's say, this Treaty of Peace and Friendship is subject to ratification. The instrument, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of ratification shall be deposited with the Secretary General of the United Nations. You see, that's what Moors have to do. We have to deposit, let the United Nations know, we became a party to our own treaties. We never understood that. We were never taught that. This is what we must understand. You know why we wasn't taught this? It's because you can't become parties to a Moroccan treaty if you call yourself a name other than Moroccan. I'll say it again. You can't become a party to a Moroccan treaty unless you are Moroccans. And Moors Americans could never become parties to a Moroccan treaty because Moors Americans, by their own verbal decree, kept saying they were not Moroccans. You see how we miseducate? It's just that simple. Okay, let's fast forward. Now the Moors are waking up. Now the Moors realize the mistakes we made. Now we understand that we are Moroccans. We're not Moroccan Americans, we're not Moors Americans. You have to drop the word American. It's like a surname. It's like being married or adopted by some family. The adopted family gave you a last name called American. When you grow up, you say, I'm gonna look for my real family. You find your real family, you say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop the whole American thing because I, I found my real family. My real family just says Moroccan. I'm Moroccan, so I appreciate my adopted family adopting me for a little while, but I have to return to my family. Which means now you dropped the surname. You dropped the adopted name, which was American, and now you're simply Moors. But Moors means what? Moroccan. You're more rocking. The Moors keep running around talking about Moors, American, you don't realize you're holding on to the surname, the adopted name called American. You gotta drop that and stick with the simple Moroccan, period. Then you can exercise, Article fifteen. This convention is subject to ratification through your government. The instrument of ratification shall be deposited. See that word, shall? Shall be deposited. Ain't no maybe. Ain't no I think about it. You gotta do it or else you cannot enforce said contract. Cause you ain't told nobody you was a party to it. You gotta let people know you're a party to the dang on contract. There can be no such thing as private law. It's gotta be public law. But how the heck is it gonna be public law if you ain't letting nobody know publicly? And they set up instructions on how you make it public. Okay, Article sixteen, this convention shall remain open for accession by any state. The instrument of accession shall be deposited with the Secretary General of the United Nations. Article seventeen.
Article seventeen, one, this convention shall enter into force on the thirteenth day following the date of deposit of the twenty-second instrument of ratification or accession with the Secretary General of the United Nations. Two, for each state ratifying or acceding to the convention after the deposit of the twenty-second instrument of ratification or accession, the convention shall enter into force on the thirteenth day after deposit of such state of its instrument of ratification or accession.
Awesome. Article seventeen, listen. Let's use a hypothetical. What if Lamont Eil, who's locked up right now, who says he's a consul general of Morocco, right? We just use him as an example. This is not a knock on Lamont. We, we gotta learn his AMPAK study session, right? It's an educational platform, but let's use good brother Lamont as an example, since he said he's the consul general of Morocco. What if now, Mer- uh Lamont pleads allegiance to a Moroccan state? And now they wanna say, well, you've got our consul general Lamont locked up because Lamont has pledged allegiance to the Moroccan state and we recognize Lamont Eil as the consul general of our Moroccan state, alright? You follow me so far? He's the common authority of his state now. But guess what international law says? Uh, we're sorry, uh, you guys want to use this nineteen seventy-three resolution against the United States to say that they're doing something to, to breach or use threat or aggression against your consul general, when you can't use this resolution today because first you gotta become what? You gotta become parties to twenty-two other United Nations resolutions before you can enforce this resolution right here and reading. Listen. Article seventeen, this convention shall enter into force on the thirteenth day following the date of deposit of the twenty-second instrument of ratification. So, so Lamont Eil's state will first have to be parties to twenty-two other instruments before they can even enforce this nineteen seventy-three convention. What does that mean? Why did the United Nations put that in there? It's called an incentive program. They're trying to incentivize all states on planet Earth to say, okay, if you want to use this as a means to be able to punish the crime of terrorism against another belligerent state and you want to use this particular contract, well, you can't use it yet until you become a, a, a party to twenty-two other United Nations resolutions, such as uh the Universal Declaration on Human Rights of nineteen forty-eight. Right? Such as the Vienna Convention on Council Relations of nineteen sixty-three. Such as the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations of nineteen sixty-one. Such as the Vienna Convention on the Law Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine. Such as UN fifteen fourteen, year nineteen sixty. Such as the United Nations Resolution on what? Friendly relations during decolonization of nineteen seventy, right, Resolution twenty-six twenty-five. Right? Such as the Declaration uh on the Rights of Indigenous People of the Year two thousand seven. So you gotta go find twenty-two other United Resolutions, United, United Nations Resolution, become parties to them first. Then the twenty-third resolution could be this one. Now you can enforce it. You see what the United Nations did? They wanted states to actually participate in being good neighbors to each other because they're all becoming parties to neutral laws that maintain peace and security. They want all the states on planet Earth to become parties to international law. That way, no one can have plausible deniability that they didn't know about these laws. It holds everybody accountable and responsible. So they already knew certain states said, oh, man, I like the way this sounds. I, I'm gonna use this against this other state. So you run out, you wanna put your name on it, and the next day you want to enforce it. And the United Nations says, nah, it, it don't work like that. You just can't pick and choose the United Nations resolution you like. Whenever you want to use it, all of a sudden, you just, at the last minute, knee jerk, you want to become a party to it today and enforce it tomorrow. It don't work like that. You gonna follow these instructions. Not only you gonna become a party to twenty-two other resolutions, twenty-two of them, but it's also gonna, you're gonna have to wait what? Thirteen days, right? You're gonna have to also wait thirteen days, right? There it is. It, it shall enter. This nineteen seventy-three uh reform shall enter. This convention shall enter into force on the thirteenth day. See? Following, following, right? Following the date of deposit of the twenty-second instrument. So it's forcing states to become parties to international law. That way, that way, everybody's playing by the same rule, you see? Incentive program, okay? Eighteen.
Eighteen, number one. Any state party may denounce this convention by written notification to the Secretary General of the United Nations. Two, denunciation shall take effect six months following the date on which notification is received by the Secretary General of the United Nations.
Awesome, oh, okay. Hold up. Let's say you're on the receiving end because you're the defendant, because you've done something- Let's say you're on the receiving end because you're the defendant, because you've done something to breach the rights of another state. You the bad guy. You operated in bad faith, right? You say, "Man, I, I put my name on this contract. I became party to it, and now I've done something to infringe against the rights of another state." Now you'd have reached out to the United Nations, "Yeah, I wanna take my name off that contract because I don't wanna be held to the standards." You know, and the United Nations said, "Yeah, that's gonna take about six months before that goes into effect." Let me read it. So let's say you petitioned, wanna take your name off the contract because you don't wanna be held to the standards of the contract. It says right here, Article eighteen. "Any state party may denounce this convention by written notification to the Secretary General of the United Nations." So you gotta get a notification, but... Then it says, "Section two, denunciation shall take effect six months following the dates on which notification is received by the Secretary General of the United Nations." You see that? So it takes only thirteen days for it to come into effect, and it takes six months to get out the contract. It gonna hold people accountable, you see that? And guess who signed this contract? Okay, let's go back up. Let's go back up. Guess who signed this contract? United States America, right? United States America signed this contract nineteen seventy-six. They're bound to it. So what they wanna get out the contract now? Well, they gotta get notification to the Secretary General, and based upon that date, they still gotta wait six months before they can get out this contract. In the meantime, the Moors be holding them accountable for breaching international law. You see? But Paul, let me pause right there. Wait a minute. What should Moors do in order to make sure the United States can never get out of these provisions? Oh, okay, now we need to learn how to copy paste and plug and play the provisions, right? We need to take all these words, okay? Take the words, all the articles, right? Articles one through whatever. Copy, then paste it into a Word doc and turn it into Moroccan law as part of our internal laws of our state. And change the names, the generic name, keep saying state. Now you say, "Okay, U-United States of America," you write it there, "United States of America, United States, and the several Union Charter States. Now you're identifying the parties." You name your state. You say, "A Lordy of Morse Credit, La Cie Colorado shall enforce this Moroccan law and shall be binding against United States of America, the United States International Organization, and the several Union Charter States." And you turn all these articles into your internal Moroccan law. Now, the United States can never give notice if they wanna get out of your Moroccan law. They can't get no six-month notification because now it's just Moroccan law. You see, this is what Moors never understood. This is how you start to flank. You flank the United States. You flank the governors. You flank the mayor. You flank the prosecutor. You flank the magistrates. You flank their judges. With international law and Moroccan law, you flank them. They can't get out of it. That must be understood. There is no expiration date when it comes to Moroccan law. It's perpetual. Let's get back to Article eighteen. Okay, one more time.
Article eighteen, paragraph one. "Any state party may denounce this convention by written notification to the Secretary General of the United Nations. Two, denunciation shall take effect six months following the date on which notification is received by the Secretary General of the United Nations. Article nineteen. "The Secretary General of the United Nations shall inform all states inter alia, A, of signatures to this convention of the deposit of instruments of ratification or accessions in accordance with Articles fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and of notifications made under Article eighteen. B, of the date on which this convention will enter into force in accordance with Article seventeen. Article twenty. "The original of this convention, of which the Chinese, English, French, Russian, and Spanish texts are equally authentic, shall be deposited with the Secretary General of the United Nations, who shall send certified copies thereof to all states. In witness whereof, the undersigned, being duly authorized thereto by their respective governments, have signed this convention, opened for signature at New York on the fourteenth of December of nineteen seventy-three."
Okay, thank you very much. And that's the conclusion of the reading, but let me say this. All this is taking place in New York. Right here in our front yard with the Moorish Americans and all their Moor science teachers. We're right here with the United Nations building. But what's more important than the United Nations building? It is the Charter itself. See, the United Nations building means nothing. It's just a building. It means nothing. It's an address that can change every year. But what's the most important? It is the Charter itself. The one hundred and eleven articles that now allows these resolutions to be set forth because of the Charter members. And this much power is sitting right here in our front yard that we never took the time to go and do any type of real research to understand what is its use and functionality? What is it, what is its benefit to Moors? So good brother Il Malik Shabazz tried to go and inquire because he was hanging out with foreign dignitaries commonly known as the African States Heads of States. And next thing you know, he's gone. He's neutralized in the sixties. Now tell me the name of the Moorish American that ever picked up the torch right where good brother Il Malik Shabazz fell. Tell me the name. And that name does not exist because the Moors decided to just go back into their churches and stay alone. They decided to just keep this thing Moorish American going, and there ain't no such thing as Moorish Americans. You see, good brother Il Malik Shabazz was gonna find out that we are Moroccans, and he was gonna find out that he could establish a Declaration of Independence for Moroccans. He was gonna find out about the Moroccan treaties. He was gonna find out he needed a Moroccan constitution. He was gonna find out how to become a member state. He was gonna find out how to enforce the rights of indigenous people. He was gonna find out how to enforce human rights. He was gonna find out all these things. But yet the Moorish Americans decided not to follow the same footprints of Il Malik Shabazz. And I say that the same thing about the Nation of Islam. I gotta say it. That was your good brother. That was your soldier. He stood out front. He took a bullet for the Nation of Islam. And what did the people from the Nation of Islam do? Did they pick up the torch? Will Malcolm X fail? No. I don't get it. But now we understand what we need to do. Ever since February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, that torch has been picked up, and that torch is moving forward. Period. And we will continue to move forward because let me tell you who represents good brother Il Malik Shabazz. Let me tell you who represents good brother Il Malik Shabazz. It's these states. States, Moroccan states, that's six of them. We got state number seven coming up. This list will continue to grow. We will all be good stewards, and we will all pay honors to good brother Il Malik Shabazz. We will pay honors to good brother Nogadju Ali because he was operating on an international level. We will pay honors to all the Moors and the so-called Negro Blacks and Colors who were trying to be leaders of our people and just didn't understand the instructions. We have picked up the torch. These six states have picked up the torch. This list will grow. We will all have torches in our hands. And we will march to the same drum. We will be on the same page. We were seen together through our Moroccan laws. And we will be in block step. Your left, your left, your left, right. We will get this done with torches in our hand. We will move forward because we have wasted enough time. That must be understood. The United Nations put in a lot of reforms to help Moors and help other states. Let's continue. Okay, so what was this all about? Okay, let's go to the top as a reminder. Right? Th-This was about... If the United States of America, let's, let's keep it germane, right? It's about Moroccans and Americans. Let's, let's keep it simple. This is about how do Moroccans deal with Americans and how Americans deal with Mor-Moroccans when it comes to our diplomats, staff, and protected persons. That's what Moors have to take away from this and what we just read. How do we enforce laws against the United States of America for their belligerence? How do we enforce international law against any of their threats, break, breaches, and aggression? What acts could we use against them? What was the legal argument? What's the legal nature you could use for your defense while you're looking at it? Now what do you do next? You become a party to it through ratification and depository. What else should you do? Now you should take these same words and convert it into Moroccan law and add more party names to it because this language is generic. It don't say United States of America. It don't say Morocco. It, it just says states. Okay, now you convert it to Moroccan law, you start adding the party name of who you want this to be applicable to. That's what Moors gotta understand. Okay. Let's back out of here. All right, so we're talking about what? What? We're talking about what? We're in chapter seven of the Charter of the United Nations. And chapter seven is about what? It's about what? Threats, breaches, and aggression, right, to the peace, right? So now we're studying acts. How do we deal with acts to counter these threats, breaches, and aggression? Well, the United Nations already put set forth some acts, which is an action, a reaction, as a counter-terrorism instruments. And that's what we're going over right now. So if you, if the United States does anything to lock up our diplomats and protected persons, it's a terrorist act. We don't have to say, "Well, we in our feelings because you locked up our consul general." We say, "Mm, we're gonna just arbitrarily say that's a terrorist act." Well, see, we ain't gotta say it's arbitrary. We ain't gotta say we just made up that off the top of our head. The United Nations since nineteen seventy-three said that this, it is a terrorist act. The United States can come out and say, "Oh, you Moors just making up stuff." Nah, 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 nah. It's right here since nineteen seventy-three. So don't tell us that we said that what you're doing is a terrorist act. You agreed to this contract. We gonna enforce it on you. Okay, check it out, Moors. All right, so under anti-terrorism, okay? Check this out. It's an instrument regarding what? Instrument regarding, um...
Taking hostages.
Taking hostages. Well, hostages is listed under what? Kidnapping, et cetera, right? Look, look at the, look at the order they put this in, okay? Nineteen seventy-three was about what? Convention on Provision, Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons. That's detaining diplomats. Then look what they put in next. Look, you think that's by coincidence? Now all of a sudden it's about what? No.
Instrument regarding the taking of hostages.
Oh, wait a minute. Why is that next? Well, see, if they detain one of your protected persons or diplomat staff, and they're, they're holding them, and now they're making some demands. Right? They're trying to force your state to do something in order to exchange for the hostage. They want you to agree to some terms and conditions. You know how the United States says, uh, "We don't negotiate with terrorists." And guess what? Neither will the Moors. The Moors would not negotiate with terrorists for doing terrorist acts. And you know what's a terrorist act? Holding on to our diplomats long-term. Holding on to our protected persons long-term. That is a terrorist act even by the standards of international law. So now, if they don't release our diplomats and our protected persons in a timely manner, we go to step two, and what is that? Now we classify it as a hostage situation. Let's read about hostage situation, right? The Moors like to call it kidnapping. But it's kidnapping, but they also call it hostage, okay? Let's get into it. Okay, so this title says what again?
"Instrument Regarding the Taking of Hostages."
Okay.
"Nineteen seventy-nine International Convention Against the Taking of Hostages provides that any person who seizes or detains or threatens to kill, to injure, or to continue to detain another person in order to compel a third party, namely, a state, an international gov-intergovernmental organization, a natural or jur-judicial person..."
Juridical.
"Juridical person or a group of persons to do or abstain from doing any act as an ex-explicit or implicit condition for the release of the hostage commits the offense of taking of hostage within the meaning of this convention."
Okay. Oh, Moors gonna love this type of language because they like talking about kidnapping, right? Okay, so this now is, is a synonym, kidnapping, hostage synonyms. Let's learn what the United Nations already set forth in nineteen seventy-nine. The Moors been talking about hostage-taking and kidnapping for decades, but the United Nations already wrote a reform to deal with that since nineteen seventy-nine. We're now in the year twenty twenty-three. It's been over forty years since this been out. Did the Moors know about this? No. What is it they didn't know about? Okay, how do we deal with the act on how to counter terrorism? We kept saying these people were terrorists. We kept saying they were criminals. Where's the Moroccan law that the Moorish American teachers wrote to deal with it, to combat it, to counter it? It don't exist, but it's always existed. They just know, didn't know where to find it. Because Moors wasn't taught to learn international law. We continue to be taught how to enforce the Constitution and all their internal municipal laws. And when you look up the definition of municipal law in the Black Law Dictionary, fourth edition, it says a contradic-contradiction to international law. So we were studying things that contradict international law. Okay, right here. We, we gotta break this down, just right here in the bulletin point. This is important. Okay, listen. That's it, it's okay. So this instrument regarding the taking of hostages is listed under counterterrorism. The title of the reform, the United Nations Resolution, is nineteen seventy-nine International Convention Against the Taking of Hostages. The bulletin point says, "Provides that any person who seizes or detains..." They've been detaining Moors, right? "...and threatens to kill or to injure. They've been injuring Moors." "Or to continue to detain." See, that's important, right? They're continuing to detain because they're using acts of coercion and aggression, right? But yet while they're doing that, they're doing what? They're maintaining threats, breaches, and using aggression, which is use of force because they're using arms to hold on to our Moors. You see what's happening? Okay, from the top. "Provides that any person who seizes," right? The United States of America, the United States, or any of their several charter Union States, governors, mayors, police, sheriffs, uh, prosecutors, uh, magistrates, right? Let's say the magistrate revokes barring, keeping you in jail, right? So that's a seizure and detention, so or detained and threatens to kill, to injure, or to continue to detain another person in order to compel a third party, namely, a state. Listen. This is about state-on-state dispute. Listen. So if the United States of America is trying to do what? To compel a Moroccan modern state. Right? Or an international, international, uh, intergovernmental organization, a natural or juridical person or a group of persons to do or abstain from doing an act as an explicit or implicit condition for the release of the hostage, commits the offense of taking a hostage within the meaning of this convention that we're about to read. So what is this? Okay. Here's what Moors gotta understand. If, if the United States of America and the governors, there's several Union States, are trying to do something to undermine the Moroccan state or they're trying to do something to undermine our WRC, our WRC Regional Council, which is an intergovernmental organization. Right? Our WRC is an international, intergovernmental organization. The United States tried to stop our WRC, but they're trying to stop our states. The United States tried to stop our WRC, or they're trying to stop our states. That's a violation of law, especially if they're detaining one of us. Especially if they try to injure one of us, if they try to use coercive measures, threats, breaches and aggression against us. It's all considered what? Terrorism. Terrorism. Because they're trying to compel us as Moors to go back and collude back into being a party of being American again. They're trying to supervise the impossibility performance for us to decolonize. That would be a terrorist act if they tried to stop it. This is what Moors gotta understand. Okay, let's read a little bit more about this whole hostage thing, shall we? Okay. Okay, now we're gonna click on it, okay? Okay, here we go. Matter of fact, let me, let me go back. Check this out, Moors. I, I just thought about something. What is this word right here? What, Moors love to talk about that Moors are human beings. We say, we're the natural people. We're human beings. But look at this word international law has right here. A natural person, right? So it says a natural or juridical person. So it's a natural person or juridical person. What's a juridical person? You see how the United Nations is writing? Okay. Why did they, why did they include these two words between these two commas, right? They, they grouped this. You gotta use detail, gotta use what your forensics. Why did they group this? Because they noted between natural people and juridical persons. But what's a juridical person? Okay. What's a juridical person? Alright. Here's the definition of juridical person.
A juridical person, also known as an artificial person, is an entity that is given rights and responsibilities in law. A juridical person has a legal name and can act as a party in legal transactions, similar to a natural person. The rights and responsibilities of a juridical person are distinct from those of the natural person constituting it.
Okay, so what's a juridical person? For example, that is the state of Alabama. State of Alabama is a juridical person in law. It is an entity. But it's acting as a person. So when they say, uh, State of Alabama versus, uh, Kendrick Johnson. See? It's two persons. They recognize the State of Alabama as a what? Artificial person and entity. But State of Alabama has what? It has some type of powers and responsibilities, right? Under its statutes, okay? So what else is a juridical person? That can also be, what we commonly know as the artificial person. These are all juridical persons. This is why you go back, okay, go back. Right, you go back. And they, they grouped this, right? They put natural person or juridical person, trying to tell you something. Right? Okay, let's look at a few more definitions. So they, let's read it one more time.
A juridical person, also known as an artificial person, is an entity that is given rights and responsibilities in law. A juridical person has a legal name and can act as a party in legal transactions, similar to a natural person. The rights and responsibilities of a juridical person are distinct from those of the natural person constituting it.
Okay, so. Mark Zuckerberg, right, then you got Facebook. When you think Facebook, you think Mark Zuckerberg. You think Mark Zuckerberg, you think Facebook. Mark Zuckerberg is quote-unquote the natural person. Facebook is what? The juridical person, the artificial person, right? That's why Moors have to look at this, okay? And this is why the United Nations is pointing this out because they know that artificial persons, i.e. juridical persons, are doing things against natural people. Such as the State of Alabama is doing something, right? Such as their charters. All counties are charters. They use an example, um, Atlanta. Right, you say Atlanta, Georgia. Atlanta is what? Most people say that's a city. But the reality is Atlanta on the record is what you call a district or county. And that district or county of Atlanta is actually what you call a person because it's listed under a charter. And that charter is a juridical person. So the municipalities within that county is enacting laws and responsibilities against anyone who lives within the jurisdiction, the boundaries of that district, i.e. of that juridical person's territory. This is why you see all the local police, when you see them, that on the, on the side of their cars, they have the name of the county. And they say, oh, my jurisdiction's only in this county. I can't cross over jurisdiction into the neighboring county. But the name of that county has a name. It's Atlanta, right? It's Cobb County, right? It's Decatur County, all these different names. This, this is Ampad's jurisdiction. And all these counties are under Ampad's jurisdiction. Ampad, Alone and Moors, Prey, and Monti, Georgia, a Moroccan state. Is overseeing the juridical person commonly known as the State of Georgia. And the State of Georgia has juridical persons within it, right? Underneath the State of Georgia is juridical persons commonly known as counties. And those counties are juridical persons because all those counties have a name. And that name's a juridical person and that juridical person is called a county that utilizes municipal laws. Sometimes referred to as districts. So the United Nations has set forth laws because they understand the distinctions between all these different districts. All these different names that states are using on planet Earth to enforce laws and statutes. That must be understood. Okay, let's read it one more time.
A juridical person, also known as an artificial person, is an entity that is given rights and responsibilities in law. A juridical person has a legal name and can act as a party in legal transactions, similar to a natural person. The rights and responsibilities of a juridical person are distinct from those of the natural person constituting it.
Okay, let's go down. Let's, let's read a couple more definitions, some brief stuff, okay? What does that say?
Who is a juridical person? Juridical person means any legal entity duly constituted or otherwise organized under applicable law, whether for profit or otherwise, and whether privately owned or governmentally owned.
Right, so a juridical person who owns the names. Well, the United States, through what they call the social security card, they own all the names that everybody has on the birth certificate. All states own the names that's on the registration. It's the property of the state. Moroccan state gonna be no different. We're all registering our name with the Moroccan state. The name becomes the property of the state. That way the state can protect its property. You can understand what's happening here. It's, it's a, it's a duality of protection. We are supposed to protect the state because we took an oath to the state. The state turns around and takes an oath to us. We protect it. It protects us. It's, the state is our property and the state looks at us like we're its property. We're in it together. Let's read this definition.
What is a legal person called? Also known as artificial person, juridical entity, juristic person, or legal person, also referred to body corporate. Um, this article contains general language information, but does not constitute professional legal advice.
Okay, let's look at some more definitions. Okay, Wikipedia, alright. What does Wikipedia say about it?
A juridical person is a human legal person that is not a single natural person, but an organization recognized by law as a fictitious person such as a corporation, government agency, non-governmental organi- organization, or international organizations such as the United Nations.
Mm-hmm, so the United Nations is what? A juridical person because it's a charter. All states are juridical persons. I'll say it again. All states on planet Earth are juridical persons because all states are what? Artificial persons. All states are recognized as persons in international law. That must be understood. All states. All international organizations are persons. There's only natural persons, which is us, the human beings. But human beings turn around and say, okay, we're gonna enact juridical persons, i.e. corporations, states, counties, that set forth laws that governs all of us equally. Because we have to set forth laws where we know how to govern amongst each other. This is what people gotta understand. Juridical persons is a term used in international law. There's only one type of human beings. That's us, flesh and blood. Everything else is an entity. Everything. But again, those entities give you the power and authority to do what you do within that jurisdiction. And that entity recognizes who gets to govern it. Moors get to govern the great enterprise, commonly known as the Empire Morocco. Everything within the Empire Morocco is an entity within our land. The several charter states, commonly known as the fifty union states, are all entities. They're all charters. They're all juridical persons. They're all artificial persons that we get to govern over it. But how do we govern over their charters? Well, we also had to have something to govern it. And what's that called? It's called the Constitution. The Constitution sets forth the rules of engagement. How we as Moroccans who recognize ourselves through that Constitution gives us the legal authority to govern over all other juridical persons and natural persons. This is called the rules of engagement. Let's read it again.
A juridical person is a human legal person that is not a single natural person, but an organization recognized by law as a fictitious person such as a corporation, government agency, non-governmental organization, or international organizations such as the United Nations.
Uh-huh. Let's find another definition. Okay, let's read that.
What is a juridical person? A juridical person is a non-human legal entity that has rights and responsibilities in law.
Uh-huh. Okay. Let's, let's read the Legal Information Institute. Let, let's click on it, just a moment. Let, let's see what Cornell says about the definition of artificial person, which is juridical person, okay? We're listening.
Artificial person, an artificial person is also known as a juridical person. It has a legal name and has certain rights, protections, privileges, responsibilities, and liabilities in law, similar to those of a natural person. In other words, an artificial person is a non-human legal entity that is not a single natural person, but an organization recognized by law as a fictitious person. In the United States, an artificial person usually refers to any entities established under the law of the United States, any foreign country, or a state, province, territory, possession, commonwealth, or dependency of the United States, or any foreign country. And as to which the government, state, province, territory, possession, commonwealth, or dependency must maintain a record showing the entity to have been established. Specifically, in a business sense, a artificial person is any form of business association and any other non-governmental legal organization, including a profitable or non-profitable corporation, partnership, limited liability company, association, trust, or unincorporated organization.
Alright, so when Sidi Mohamed, around the year seventeen seventy-seven, but yet Sidi Mohamed really started uh, his correspondence with the thirteen colonies around seventeen seventy-four. Sidi Mohamed started to get into correspondence with the thirteen colonies. He was, he was instrumental in the fact that they declared their independence. Because they already knew in advance that Sidi Mohamed would start to provide protection for them. But in protecting them, once the thirteen colonies dissolved their charters they had with Great Britain, right? So the thirteen colonies, each one of those thirteen colonies were charers that were extended from Great Britain. Those charters allowed the thirteen colonies to perform within that entity, commonly known as the charter. But when they dissolved the charters, then what did they have to do next? They had to establish something else that recognized them, right? And what ended up recognizing them? Well, first, Sidi Mohamed in the year seventeen seventy-seven, December seventeen seventy-seven, he recognized their Declaration of Independence, but they were unprotected. The thirteen colonies did not have an umbrella. They, they were not inside of an entity just yet. So Sidi Mohamed allowed them to start taking the proper steps towards, towards establishing a constitution, right? That's where you get your Articles of Confederacy, Confederacy from, right? The Continental Congress of seventeen eighty-one. That constitution created an entity where they could all put themselves inside of. Thirteen colonies came under that entity name. And Sidi Mohamed turned around and said, okay, deposit that constitution with me. Now I recognize that artificial person, that juridical person, commonly known as the Confederacy Constitution, right? The Confederate, the Continental Congress, right? That's the entity. The United States of America was established in the year seventeen eighty-nine. That's when it was concluded. Right, that was their second constitution they started writing in seventeen eighty-seven, right? Then they put it to full force and effect in seventeen eighty-nine, which created another entity. In seventeen eighty-nine, December seventeen eighty-nine, George Washington deposited that entity with Sidi Mohamed. So Sidi Mohamed accepted that constitution as an entity. That way, Sidi Mohamed and the kingdom, I mean, excuse me, and the Empire Morocco could govern over that entity. And that entity recognized the thirteen colonies. But who had jurisdiction over those, those charters, that entity commonly known as the United States of America's Constitution of seventeen eighty-nine was Moroccan government. Because Sidi Mohamed granted a right for the Americas to establish the entity commonly known as the United States of America of seventeen eighty-nine. This is why George Washington wrote the letter to Sidi Mohamed. He, he provided the copy. These are all entities. All constitutions establish an entity that sets forth laws and regulations amongst the people. The people are the natural people and the state itself is an artificial person. Alright, listen. Okay. So now that we're going over that brief exercise, let's, let's go back. Now we're starting to understand when the United Nations uses the word natural or juridical person. Juridical is all the entities such as the State of Alabama. Because the State of Alabama's entity, commonly known as their constitution, is not recognized in international law because the State of Alabama never deposited their constitution with the United Nations. So the United Nations cannot turn around and recognize the State of Alabama as a state. But the United Nations set forth re- resolution that says we do recognize it as what? A juridical person. Whatever it may call itself is just an artificial entity. Okay? So it's holding everybody accountable no matter what they call themselves. Now look at this. Let me show the Moors this. This is, I'm spending some time here for a reason. Let's read this paragraph again. No.
Provides that any person who seizes or detains or threatens to kill, to injure, or to continue to det- to detain another person in order to compel a third party, namely, a state, an international intergovernmental organization, a natural or juridical person, or a group of persons to do or abstain from doing any act as an explicit or implicit condition for the release of the hostage commits the offense of taking of hostage within the meaning of this convention.
Okay, now let me get the Moors' example. Listen to this point I'm about to make. It's very important for Moors to understand. This is about the taking of hostages, right? Okay, it says the taking, but now you want to make conditions, right? You want conditions for the release of said hostage, right? But wait. The hostage of what is the question? That hostage belongs to somebody, right? Well, who's, who's the hostage? It must be a national, a diplomatic protected person of what?
A state.
A state. Now watch this. Look how the United Nations put these words in sequential order. This is called looking at something in detail. This is why I tell Moors, don't skim over words. Make the words organic to you. Look at the sequential order they put this in. Before they even said the word hostage, look at what they say. Look, look at the order. Before they even said the word hostage, look at what they say. Look, look at the order. They say, okay, we're talking about a hostage, but look at the first word that's in sequential order. First it says, a state. That's the first word, matter of fact, let me read it from the top. So let's, let's get in a proper context. Okay, so this resolution nineteen seventy nine, International Convention Against the Taking of Hostages, right? Provides that any person who sees or detains and threatens to kill, to injure, or to continue to detain another person in order to compel a third party, namely a state. So now that's the party, the name of the party, it starts with the word state first. It says, state, international, intergovernmental organization, a natural or juridical person, or a group of persons to do or abstain from doing an act as an explicit or implicit condition for the release of the hostage. Now wait, look at the order they put it in. They said first, a hostage must be a hostage of somebody's what? State. And without a state, there's no what? There's no international, intergovernmental organization because there can be no intergovernmental organization without a state that established the intergovernmental organization. Okay, so what's next? Then it says, then they mentioned a natural or juridical person. Which tells you the people, the natural people, Moors, he said, we're human beings, okay, sounds good. Who said you're a human being? Where is your state? Where is the state? Where is the state that recognizes the natural? Then it goes on and says, the natural person or juridical person. What's a juridical person? That's any organization that we put together such as the Wazir Regional Council. That's an intergovernmental organization, is also considered a juridical person because it has responsibilities to enforce resolutions and laws. What next? Then it says, oh, and then they can talk about, or a group of persons, right? Or a group of persons, but there's no persons without what? A state. To do what? To abstain from doing any, any act as explicit or implicit condition for the release of the hostage. So the hostage belongs to what? The state. You see how they put it in order? This is called detail, Moors. Okay, so how could the Moors say that they were hostages? If in fact the Moors didn't have a state? How could the Moors say they were kidnapped if they were stateless? And what you're gonna find out when we read this resolution about hostages, one of the articles says, you cannot be consented to be a hostage or kidnapped if in fact you're a national of the same state. And all Moors Americans are what? Americans. Claiming the American government is holding them hostage and kidnapped. I'll say it again. The Moorish Americans, who call themselves the true Americans, are saying the American government is holding them hostage and kidnapped. But international law, when we read it, you'll find out international law, international law does not recognize if in fact you're a national of the same state. You ain't being held kidnapped or hostage within your own national state. You can only be kidnapped or hostage by a foreign state. But yet you gotta tell the whole world what's the name of your state. And the state gotta recognize you as one of its what? Natural human beings. You see how easy that was? The Moorish Americans are all out of pocket. And it ain't their fault, it's their Moorish American teachers done this to us. I'm not innocent, I used to be a Moorish American. And I was stuck on stupid. What does stupid mean? I was just ignorant, I didn't know the truth. But you see how easy this is? You see how I read these words, it's so simplistic. State first, then it mentions natural person. Sequential order. Moors didn't know nothing about that. Let's continue. Hopefully Moors learned something from what I just said, off that one single paragraph, that one bulletin point, look how deep I went. We should have been taught this years ago. Let's continue. Okay, now we're getting into the actual resolution, okay? It's only seven pages. Uh more than likely we won't get through it today, but we're, we're going to take a crack at it, right? We get it, we'll get it going, alright? Okay, uh from the top.
Multilateral International Convention Against the Taking of Hostages, adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations on the seventeenth of December of nineteen seventy nine. International Convention Against the Taking of Hostages. The states parties to this convention, having in mind the purpose and principles of the Charter of the United Nations, concerning the maintenance of international peace and security, and the promotion of friendly relations and cooperation among states.
Pause, cooperation amongst who? States. How can Moors enforce their rights against the United States if the Moors are stateless? Don't even make no sense, do it? Moors gotta return back to a Moroccan state if you want to enforce your rights against the United States. This is just too easy from the top.
The states parties to this convention, having in mind the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations concerning the maintenance of international peace and security, and the promotion of friendly relations and cooperation among states. Recognizing in particular that everyone has the right to life, liberty, and security of person as set out in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. Reaffirming the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations and the Declaration on Principles of International Law, concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations, as well as in other relevant resolutions of the General Assembly.
Pause. Okay, listen, this is important. Reaffirming the principle of equal rights, Moors wanted equal rights. Moors wanted what? Self-determination to be human beings, right? So let's start all over. Reaffirming, so who's reaffirming? The United Nations is doing this. Reaffirming the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations. Let's pause right there. So the answer to the test for Moors, they could have found a little bit of salvation where? In the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations. But unfortunately, the Moors hadn't been reading the Charter of the United Nations. Too busy reading the Post-Letter to Obama. They're too busy reading their Circle Seven Koran. Now I got no problems with literature. But literature is for when you're in the peace and comfort of your own home, but when you're talking about public law, public law is found in the United Nations Charter. Public law is found through your Moroccan laws. Public law is your Moroccan constitution. Public law is through your consul court. Your private law is their Circle Seven Koran, that's literature versus legislation. All laws are an act or subject to legislation. Anything other than that is literature, which means it's private. Moors been spending all their time studying private law instead of public law, and yet giving us the answers to the test. This came out nineteen seventy nine. Listen, reaffirming the principle of equal rights and self-determination of people a- as enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations. This is generic language for all people on planet Earth, not just Moors that's been colonized in the West. If people want self-determination, they want their rights, and all people on planet Earth can use the United Nations Charter to their advantage. Why do Moors know this? From the top. Reaffirming the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations and the declarations on principles of international law concerning friendly relations and cooperations amongst states. What resolution is that? That's Resolution twenty six twenty five of the year nineteen seventy. In accordance with the Charter of the United Nations, as well as the other relevant resolutions of the General Assembly, all the resolutions. This is where the Moors could have found their answers. We just didn't know about it. And I know I keep saying this over and over again, but this is what I need the Moors to understand. How can we ever fix it if we don't know what's broken? I'm gonna keep talking about what's broken so we know that we gotta fix it. Because your Moorish American teachers won't point out that what you're doing is broken. I'll do it with reference points. That way we can do what? Fix it.
Considering that the taking of hostages is an offense of grave concern to the international community and that, in accordance with the provisions of this convention, any person committing an act of hostage-taking shall either be prosecuted or extradited.
Read it again.
Considering that the taking of hostages is an offense of grave concern and the international community and that, in accordance with the provisions of this convention, any person committing an act of hostage-taking shall either be prosecuted or extradited.
Read it again.
Considering that the taking of hostages is an offense of grave concern to the international community and that, in accordance with the provisions of this convention, any person committing an act of hostage-taking shall either be prosecuted or extradited.
Pause. If the United States, federal government, or either several charter union states, governors, mayors, prosecutors, police, sheriff, magistrates, et cetera. If they're holding on to white diplomats, staff, and protected persons, it's an act of terrorism. And also we can list it now as what? Hostage status. And guess what? Moors are not going to negotiate with terrorists. And what the United Nations tell you to do? The United Nations turned around and said, okay, if you took some hostages, now you're looking at what? An act of hostage-taking shall either be prosecuted or extradited. To be prosecuted. Not playing around. This is a grave crime. It's a grave crime from the top. Considering that the taking of hostages is an offense of a grave concern to the international community and that, in accordance with the provisions of this convention, any person committing an act of hostage-taking shall either be prosecuted or extradited. That's what Moors should have always known. Let's continue.
Being convinced that it is urgently necessary to develop international cooperation between states in devising and adopting effective measures for the prevention, prosecution, and punishment of all acts of taking of hostages as manifestations of international terrorism.
Uh huh, so listen to what they're saying. Not only should someone be prosecuted, but really what you should try to do is prevent it in the first place. How do you get into cooperation with another state? Well, that's called effective communication. It's the obligations of Moroccans to let the Americas know what's up. Well, how do we let them know what's up? Well, first we gotta give them notification of our Moroccan laws. Our law said, you shall do this and you shall not do that. Now they know how to get into relations with us. If they breach, breach our Moroccan laws, okay, now you're dealing with what? Threats, breaches, and aggression. And depending on the subject matter, if they detain a diplomatic protected person, immediately that goes under umbrella terrorism. And then if they're still detaining the diplomat or protected person after we've given them notification that, um, sorry, you might have made a mistake, you need to release them immediately without delay. They still don't do it, they still detaining them? Now it goes into a totally different classification of what? Hostage. You see how this is working? Paragraph right here, being convinced that it is urgently necessary to develop international cooperation between states in devising and adopting effective measures, right? First we gotta put something in place that says, how are we gonna get along? But then also in that same agreement, it says, but if you breach this agreement, he- here's the penalty. You see? All contracts have some form of a penalty written in, right? So from the top says, being convinced that it is urgently necessary to develop international cooperation between states in divesting and adopting effective measures for the prevention, prosecution, and punishment of all acts of taking of hostages as manifestation of international terrorism. So it's the Moors' obligation to set forth reforms, instrument, friendly applications, right? Mechanisms to do what? Try to first do what? First we have to try to prevent. What are the Moorish Americans' rights that would prevent the United States of America from infringing against our rights? What do we write? We didn't write nothing. We're just need to try to enforce their municipal laws. What do we write in terms of our, our laws? Okay, let me ask you a question. Where's the Moorish American manual on laws? Ain't no such thing as a Moorish American, Moorish American three-inch, three binder, three-ring binder of laws that the Moorish Americans set forth. It don't exist. The Moors don't have no, no metal office shelf just full of just laws? So therefore, we were negligent in writing laws to prevent these things in the first place. And we wonder why it kept, it keeps happening to us because we never set forth anything to prevent it. Then after that, there and there's looking at what? Prosecution. If in fact they breach the prevention, the prevention contract, i.e. the Moroccan law. Well, let's say you had a Moorish American law that they breached. Even though there's no such things as Moorish Americans, and neither there any such thing as Moorish American laws. So the United States ain't breached no Moorish American laws. But let's say they did. Okay, how are you gonna prosecute? And you don't have no Moorish American courts. Because you never had no Moorish American laws. The only way to enforce laws is through courts. Moorish Americans didn't have no courts, they're claiming they did through their consulate, but all that was what? Pathily frivolous, arbitrary and capricious. Because the only way to have a consulate, a consulate is what? A juridical person, an artificial person, is an extension of the state. Okay, all the Moors who claim to be a part of the, the MAC, right? The Moorish American consulate, tell me the name of the state that established the consulate. It don't exist. And I don't say that to be condescending against the Moors who've been trying to fix this through the consulates, but the reality is this. We did things out of sequential order. First, remember I was talking about it, first you need what? A state. Then you can put together an intergovernmental organization. On behalf of who? The natural person and then the juridical person. You saw the order they put it in? But you know what the Moors did first? First they tried to put together artificial entities before they put together the state. And they never did write any laws, even through the consulate or the Moorish American temples, nothing. I, I'm just pointing these things out, I have no choice. We messed up. And we wanna keep telling these people that they're criminals, and the reality is, tell me the name of the law that they breached. You're only a criminal if you've done something to break a law. What law did the United States of America and the United States and their governors break? Tell me the name of the law. Where's your legal argument that your legal nation, they broke the Moroccan law? Quote it for me. It don't exist, Moorish Americans can't tell you. You know what they'll tell you? They're gonna grab something from the United States statutes. They're gonna go to the state of Virginia and say, according to the state of Virginia's case law, Rand, due to Carter and President, uh, uh precedent, it said, uh, uh, Virginia versus Frankford. Uh, this person, uh, had a chance to walk around with a concealed weapon. That's case law. Wait a minute, you, you said you're a Moor, you trying to enforce the state of Virginia statutes? Where the heck is your Moroccan law? You're claiming to be Moorish. Moorish means Moroccan. Tell me the Moroccan law that they violated against you, and you can't tell me? I say this because I'm trying to be straight up with the Moors. We messed up. We didn't know what the heck we was talking about, and our teachers didn't know what they was talking about either. I'm just telling the truth. Anybody that wanna challenge me, I'm up to the challenge. Set up the panel, and we can talk about it from the, from the East Coast to the West Coast. Let's get it popping. Set up the panel. Put me on the stage, whoever you think your Moors American champion is to talk about that municipal law versus international law and Moroccan law. Set it up. Y'all know my phone number, you know the email address, y'all know how to find me. Set up in the next thirty days. If I don't hear from you by September first, that mean you waived your right to challenge me. I love the Moors, and I'm sick and tired of these Moors American teachers and all these sellout Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders. Leading our people down the wrong path. They won't tell them these simple truths. This stuff been out since the forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties, and two thousands, and nobody has a clue? Yeah, right. You withholding information. Because you wanna sit at the top of your pyramid schemes collecting all the money. Those days coming to an end. So I say to anybody who think they can challenge this information, I give you thirty days and thirty nights to come up with the challenge, and we can get on a panel, we can discuss it. When September first hit, I'm gonna send it out, you waived your right to challenge the information because you technically not challenging me. I'm only sharing information. And I'm gonna bring this information strong. Good luck with that. Let's continue. Okay. So what's the time? Alright, okay, I'll tell you what, Moors. We won't even get into this Article One, because this is a good document, it's only seven pages. We're gonna pick this up in class one thirteen, alright? That we'll keep learning about what's called kidnapping and hostage-taking. But you can only be a hostage if in fact you're a national of state. If you're not a national of state, then it's not kidnapping and hostage. It just mean they'd have locked up one of their own citizens. I am with that. Islam.
Islam.